All right, guys, I apologize, we're about three minutes behind schedule, but I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Mr. Tucker, would you like to lead us in the invitation?
Power heads, dear Lord, guide us as we come together tonight. Have us make wise decisions and give us guidance as we do so. Bless those amongst us and protect all who serve. We pray this in Christ's name.
Amen. Ms. Thorne, you want to lead us in the questions?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to declare Texas a state, a position to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, as I say in every, every meeting, rules are decorum in our effect. Basically, it means be respectful to each other. Next up, we have some firemen, we have an award presentation by Chief Simmons. Chief, I'm gonna turn it over to you. We, we do need a father and son picture. Folks, i-if you're not, if you're not aware, folks, uh, we have a father and son that both work for our fire department. That's why I asked them to take this picture. Is that it, chief? You're good? All right. We're gonna move on to item number five, which is citizens' comments. Guys, it's, I, I will list out the people in order to come speak. Please try to keep it down to the five-minute time limit. Are we good still? Okay. All right, first up, Sherri London.
Okay. All right, time myself. My name is Sherri London, I live at 216 Harvest Ridge Drive. I have lived in McLeanachism since 2018, and since that time, I've been aware of some concerns with our water company. And I'm speaking in advance of whatever Mayor Short is going to share with us later. But I'm gonna share with you my concern and what I found out today in the course of some research. Now, the concern is that RCH is not providing adequate water supply, adequate pressure, or notice when there's an emergency or drought restrictions. There's a concern that additional permits are being given out when the capacity is inadequate. And I, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know the law. My understanding is that someone who has a CCN, when someone makes an application and meets the requirements, they must provide the water. But there are also requirements that say, once the CCN holder reaches a certain capacity in its system, it is required to secure additional water supply, additional elevated storage, or whatever the requirements are, to meet that capacity. That's what you agree to do when you become a CCN. I'm concerned, and I don't know the answer to this question, about how well RCH and the city are communicating about that capacity. Numerous residents have filed complaints with the PUC of Texas and TCEQ. I'm happy to forward you the response that I got from PUC Texas. Today, I went down to Fort Worth to review the compliance file with TCEQ. In the correspondence section, I noticed a letter from August of 2021, which was a letter to RCH about an inspection that had happened in July of 2021, a year ago, noting that there were no violations, but there were three issues to be addressed within a 90-day period. Now, there was no evidence that this had been completed, and that maybe it means it's on someone's desk, or, and not in the file that I got to see, or that it's not been completed. I don't know the answer to that question. I also noted prior correspondence on the same issues resulting from a 2020 inspection, when I'm aware there was a very detailed inspection where they hooked up to a fire hydrant to record the pressure overnight for a number of weeks. Both of those inspections mentioned three concerns. The first one was a lack of backflow prevention assemblies at customer locations that had sprinklers and onsite septic. That's most of our houses on one and a half acres. The second concern was that the max daily usage had peaked above the contracted water amount. At that time, it was, well, 2.1 million gallons per day, and it had peaked at 2.5 at that time. And they were cited for failure to provide adequate water to meet the demand. And then the third concern they had was that they were operating at 97% of the minimum required storage capacity, and the law requires that once they reach 85% of that capacity, they're required to send a plan to the executive director of TCEQ indicating how they're going to meet that additional demand within 90 days. This was over a year ago. I noted in the infrastructure file that in May of 2021, RCH submitted plans for a new water tower. In July of 2021, those plans were approved for construction by TCEQ. A month or so ago, RCH came to planning and zoning to work on that water tower parcel over there by Sonoma Verde. But I do note that that was almost one year after the approval that TCEQ had. The records also showed 1,894 service connections in 2017, and TCEQ records currently show 2,417 from what I got. Yet, 2.1 million gallons per day has been the capacity since 2009. In speaking with the city manager of Rockwall, it is unlikely they're going to get more supply from Rockwall during the current contract renegotiation due to infrastructure issues that Rockwall has on their side, meaning pressure if they give us more water. North Texas municipal water supply is not coming online anytime soon. It requires pipelines, right-of-ways, and time. And they only recently started looking into it, three months ago, according to the city of Rockwall, even though the 2009 contract required them to have a good faith effort to secure additional supply with North Texas water. And now we're, what, 11, 12 years later, and that's only just now happening. So, while I have concerns, I don't necessarily have answers. However, I just want to urge the city council to hold RCH accountable for these requirements that they're having. TCEQ also needs to hold them accountable, and I'll be talking to them about that. They're the ones who are supposed to be enforcing this new supply. I don't know if it's legal for us to have a moratorium on new connections, but when the last several summers, we peaked out at way beyond that max demand without any drought restrictions coming through, which is a whole other... And I'm done. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Adrian?
Adrian Ball from 1518 Forensic Court. On item 7.1, I did have a chance to review, I want to say thank you to Mr. Hala, did a very good job, and I believe another city administrator worked on it. Defining, one of my things that I was mentioning at one of the council meetings is that defining it was very crucial, and that was done in an excellent way. So, thank you for taking some of my concerns and also applying, applying them as well. Really appreciate that. And then, just wanted to kind of update, if most of you know about the situation with RCH. As of yesterday, I have sent in my first grievance letter to RCH, and hopefully, we'll find out some news if they're gonna be complying. And if not, we'll still continue to do the steps that are available to customize RCH.
Thank you, Adrian. Bev?
Hi, I'm Bev Stevens, I live at 279 Partridge Drive. Excuse me. Good evening, mayor, council, and city staff. I am here this evening to first thank you for your service to our community. I understand the difficulty you face in your seats. Last May, a petition forced you to spend $15,000 on an election, for a tax rollback election. In my opinion, this was money that should not have been spent. My husband and I were among the 30 voters who voted against the rollback. We understa-we understand that most areas of city revenue are not guaranteed, and that citizens enjoy the services that you currently provide. While it's not much, we would like to return the check that we received from CAD due to the election outcome to the city. The small difference the rollback made in our taxes is better spent in your hands than ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. Mark? You're up.
Mark Hipper, 31 fireside. I just want to follow up to what my good friend Bev said. Uh, and I'm not gonna be as eloquent, but I do think we need to get serious if we're gonna be a city. We heard, uh, serious concerns expressed in this room over the last year on about roads, public safety, and now water. And all of those require a government that's able to respond to those needs. And yet, in a community where the average home value is over $600,000, we somehow think ultra-low taxes represents limited government. I think it represents stupid government. Limited government is government that provides for essential services for citizens. And it's not through the faults of this council or the mayor that we're in this predicament, but we are. And if we're gonna get serious about addressing the issues, establish accountability about water, establish the ability to maintain our roads, and more importantly, keep our public safety officials well seated. Right now, they're last in the county. We have our fire department, so our, one of the wealthiest communities has the lowest-paid firefighters. That, that simply doesn't make any sense to me. So, I too am returning. I didn't, I wasn't smart enough to return the check, I should have done what Bev did. But I'm, wrote a check, and I'm just gonna give it back to the city and let the city take it. Because this $214 that I got back in my rollback on a $500,000 assessed home, it's, it's just pennies in comparison to what the real needs are. Because I'd much rather have a reliable water source that is run by the city. I'd much rather have firefighters and public safety officials that are keeping us safe. And I'd much rather have roads that I can drive on safely and not have to pay excessive maintenance on a vehicle to repair it because of improper roads. So those, so that's $214, and this is really a dinner out. So, thank you for your service.
Key Short, 1525 Barolo Drive. I'm not speaking on this side of the podium as a mayor, I'm speaking as a private citizen. All right, give me a minute, 'cause technology doesn't like me, it shuts off on me sometimes. All right, if there's no other citizens' comments for the night, it is 6:58. Citizens' comments are closed for the evening. All right, we'll move on to item six, which is the consent agenda, which is 6-1, 6-2, 6-3, 6-4, 6-5, 6-6, and 6-7, 6-8, and 6-9. I entertain a motion to approve all of those unless there is something somebody needs to hold off. hold off.
I'll make a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
So, that unanimous? All right, moving on to item seven point one, food trucks. I asked that this be put back on tonight because I don't, I don't want this to die, but I wanted to see where we're at with this because we do have vendors that are interested in coming to our city as mobile food vendors, but we need to get our side of the house done correctly and have the ordinance in place. So, I put this on the agenda. Where are we at on that ordinance as far as? Are we at the point that y'all can approve it?
I just had a couple of housekeeping things.
Okay.
There's nothing substantial.
What housekeeping things do we have?
Well, on, we refer to the Director of Planning and Development throughout the document, and I didn't know if we wanted to do that or be more consistent where we also say in another section, "the city administrator or his designee." So, I was just thinking that might be good to just use that phrase throughout instead of the, and eliminated the reference to the Director of Planning and Development. That's what I would just think, just use "city administrator" or "designee" throughout.
We can do that.
Okay. I do, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask council, too.
Well, I agree with her, that one grammatical thing I think should be.
And then, on page seven of the contract, under sub-paragraph five, we say that there's an application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, but then in the, further on in the text, we say that that permit is for a certain amount of time. I would tend to think that we should only charge an annual application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. It didn't seem like if somebody's going to have to renew their thing every three months that we should charge them two hundred and fifty dollars every time. I was thinking we should just do an annual renewal of two hundred and fifty dollars per minute. Well, that, and if we haven't paid the two hundred and fifty dollars for a whole year, they're more likely to come back, I would think, versus if you only have to every, you know, every time you come, have to do an application, an application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Why don't, why don't you just do a two hundred and fifty dollar for the year, and then if they come back, they can come back for free or whatever?
That's what it, that's what that means.
Okay.
In my mind, yeah.
And for a year? Okay.
That's kind of what I was thinking, and this would all go into our fee schedule anyway, right? So, anyway, I was just thinking about that. It just seemed like it was a lot or someone, because if they're great, we want them to keep coming back.
Right.
But if they're not, you still want them to come back.
You give that, you give that two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was a little excessive to charge them two hundred dollars for ninety days and then have to re-up that fee again, so I had the same question.
Not important. I'd be more apt to say six months. Anything else? I mean, I know the grammatical.
Or if, like, if you like the six months, we could always state two hundred and fifty dollars for the year, should there be no complaints or anything? And then, I mean, I don't...
And they keep coming back. It's a lot easier for every time. No, we can give them, you know, each permit is one week or two weeks or a month or something like that, but I strongly suggest a shorter period of time because they make citizens sick. Well, just by way of example, and I've seen that happen, they give them experience. That way, we've got a better idea of, okay, we know who they were, at least what they put on the application, and remember, they don't, if they're not truthful in the application, boom, they're gone. No more application from us because we can't get a permit in the city if we find out that they lied on the application. But we know a person, we know an address, we know a phone number, we know a contact information, and that way, we can do a better job of protecting the citizens versus, well, in this situation, in this situation. Okay, wait, let me, let me check on that. That's three A Roman numeral two. Nobody's going to want to enforce it. We don't have the personnel to enforce it. It's much more difficult. We've got three real full-time employees, okay? And so, that way, just regulating the permits, they fill out the permit form, and Conrad or Chellie, whoever's going to do it, says, okay, here's what's going on. You got the permit. I know you're Joe Blow, Joe Steblow, and this is your snow cone stand, and this is what your corporate address is, and phone number, contact information, something happens, we can get in touch with you. That, that's really what the permit is really for, is to regulate so we know if somebody's doing something they don't need to do inside our city or our citizens are injured from it, we're able to track that person down. That's really the point of, of the permits.
Right.
Mayor and Council, this is real common, what happens here. Our city attorney is trying to enforce it. He's looking at the things that he's seen throughout his career of enforcement. The mayor and council want to just grab some food and have the residents grab some food, but there definitely is a need for enforcement because for the ten that are good, there'll be one that's not. And this, this, having it potentially an excessive cost or not a big term is something that helps in the enforcement of knowing where they are. So, just so you recognize that, Mr. Holla is just telling you the reality of what his experience is in trying to protect the city that way.
So, how, in this, I wasn't sure in this ordinance how long an application was good for.
Here, here's the thing. Having saw something just a minute ago, the fee is not outrageous. The average fee is between two hundred, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars in the state of Texas. What I think is, I think that's a good idea at the rate that we have, whether we choose six months or a year, but we probably need to... Okay. Is, is the question that council's going to have to figure out. The other thing is, you may want to consider, because I would say that's a little steep if you have a vendor that only wanted to, say, be here Saturday and Sunday, maybe twice a year. You know, maybe we have a daily fee for the guys that come for only like a special event schedule. Follow what I'm saying, Michael? Okay, and that's fine if that's...
Gotcha.
Right, this is our first time to do all this.
That's a lot of permits for, for staff to have to issue. So, what I'm trying to do is balance as best I can the purpose of these permits, which is to have some people, a way to track down if somebody's doing something they shouldn't and not a roaming staff. Now, Mayor, what you're talking about, before you start saying, "I don't like the idea," I do. Now, what most cities will do is they'll have a special event permit.
There you go.
So, they'll have an ordinance, and what they'll, they'll have a definition of what a special event is, and you would come in and pay X amount for that special event because typically, generally, normally, you're going to have more vendors at a special event and come in for permits for those than for, for this, just on average. And it makes sense. That's logical. Now, those permits would be a little bit cheaper than two fifty because they're, in another way, you're not going to last for ninety days, you're going to last for that specific event because anytime they come in to apply, whatever the event is, you know what it is. You're like, oh, I need a special, what, what, what for what? A permit or a special event? Oh, I'm coming in for the, for the tree lighting, only to be here for that weekend. Okay, so I went, there you go. And so, we, we can work on that, a special event permit as well. You had something to say?
Yes, sir. So, part of this, too, you've got to think of the fire inspections. Any of these food trucks, food vendors coming are going to have to be fire inspected prior to coming in, making sure that they have the features in there that they're required to have for the food trucks. So, part of your fees, that could be part of that as well. And the goal, now that I hear this is being talked about heavily, and I haven't been part of that discussion, but we would come up with some type of sticker for those that plan on being here or returning where they get their fire inspection done. We go by and we notice they've got a sticker showing they were inspected on this date, they would be in compliance with these, with the ordinance.
Another thing, too, is what I like to, now, we, we're requiring, we don't have a health department per se, so we'll go through block law, and, you know, a lot of times counties will just do that at various, sometimes it's interlocal, under seven ninety-one, interlocal, or the local government code, you just do the interlocal agreement, blah, blah. Well, there's usually at least some amount that we would have to pay. So, even though it is government entity and government entity, Article three, section fifty-two still comes into play. We can't, we can't get something for nothing or give something free, and neither can they. So, they can't come in and make inspections and not have their people pay for it because it's not, I understand it's in the county, but that would be the purpose of the interlocal because it's for a specific city, us. Same thing, same thing if we were doing fire inspections for other people, you know, for various different things, we would have to, like, house and home inspections, we have to charge for those. So, you know, that is another way that the fee would cover those things. Again, I'm not, I'm okay if you don't want to owe the fee, but I'm just saying there's a lot more here, and the cost, we're allowed with these like this, the way the law works is, this is a program, more or less, that we're doing, and so, we're allowed to charge what our cost would be to pay staff to do certain things for the program. Now, it cannot, this is not, if we ever do get a tax base and a prior tax rate where we're high enough to get into the water business eventually, because that was eventually our goal through the budget, obviously, the rollback hurt that, but eventually, if we could ever do that, we can make money in the water business. This is not something we can make money. We recover our costs, but not make too much. So, plus, that would also take into account the burden of the town.
Well, yeah, because won't they have, won't someone have to pay for that health permit? Is that the vendor that pays for the health permit?
Right, right.
So, what about the health inspection, then the vendor would pay for that, too? That's not...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but if they, if they charge us for coming out to do those, I don't...
Then we have to build in...
Yeah, that's why a lot of it works, is they'll, they'll come out. They don't go like to the county to do that. The county will have to send somebody out to, to work events or things like that.
Well, let's make those changes. Now, for an ordinance, we still have to have public hearings on them, right?
No.
No, not for an ordinance.
And plus, we've already had, what, at least two of them?
Well, let's, let's make those changes in, at the next council meeting if all the changes are amicable for everybody.
Now, what, so I know, what, what are the changes? I know we want to change the definition.
Yeah, where it says "city administrator or designee," I think is how you said it.
What, any other changes?
I don't think there's a problem with the amount of money on the permit fee. I think it's the time.
Okay. I think six months would be a problem.
The only reason I'm saying six months is because you have some of the things going on are more seasonal where they only handle in a certain time. You know, you may want to, you may want to look at that being a six-month timeframe.
Okay.
We can always amend that.
We can always go back and amend it.
So, make it a hundred eighty days and seven nights?
Yeah. And do you think, I was thinking also, under inspections, under eleven, sub-paragraph A, you said the city may inspect the food, mobile food vendor during regular business hours and at other reasonable times. Can we just say at any time?
No, I'd leave it like that. You can, you can, but we won't really have a right to like, if we know where they are, unless they live in the trenches, we can't go there.
No, I meant like during operation, during their operation.
Well, we've already, that's what it says.
That's how that all is.
And then, what's then, and then what does "and at other reasonable times" mean then?
Uh, let's say, hey, look, you know what, business hours are over, but it's an hour after bit, and they've been sitting around like doing nothing, and our person's going, hey, you know what, that looks needed, we need to check that out. We're going to be unamiable over that.
Okay.
All right.
Flank an unannounced inspector.
Michael, I had a question about access to restroom facilities. That's on page five of twelve. And they're talking about an agreement between the food vendor and the owner of the property itself to come together and establish...
Are you on A or B?
It's on A.
A, okay.
And they're, they're talking about establishing the, placing these, these, I guess, fixed units. There's no quantitative number. How do they make a decision as to what number they need? Is there any kind of standard for that, other than they agree that they're going to put a bathroom on site, and they just put one and there's three hundred people there? And then, I don't quite understand how they come to a conclusion as to how many should be there.
I'm, I'm not sure I'm...
Yeah, in total, I mean, if you have, we had an event here, we had probably six hundred people, and I think there were like three bathrooms at the level, six bathrooms at one time at a time, and that was inadequate. So, how do you establish a standard for the number of bathrooms you need?
Every mobile food vendor's got to have some sort of range.
So, if you have six...
But I think what he's asking, Michael, is if it's good in there that it says they have to work it out with whoever the, where they're going to locate, is, is there a formula for the number of bathrooms that may be needed based on the food truck, maybe the amount of people that may utilize that food truck, or if there's multiple food trucks in that location?
No, and that's, and that's what I'm saying because it says any mobile food vendor that's going to be in a location for more than an hour has got to submit written proof. So, bathrooms are covered. It doesn't matter if there's one bathroom or eighty-seven thousand bathrooms.
So, there's not, there's not a quantitative formula?
No, because each, each vendor that's going to be there for an hour has addressed the bathroom issue. Every individual vendor for over an hour has addressed the bathroom issue. So, I mean, the, the way I looked at it is, as long as the bathroom... five hundred people show up every day, or is it gonna have five? So it's kinda hard to, hard to put a number to that.
Yeah, Councilmember Tucker.
And I realize that, I realize that, I, I think that after a certain history of having the truck on premise, you would determine really what the number is. And I think with this being kind of open that there's that inherent allowance in, in this as it's written. But I, I was wondering if there was a standard formula?
You can always amend.
No, I mean, it's got, if you've got seven vendors that show up, all seven of them have to have some sort of written agreement, if they're gonna be in one hour, all seven of them have to have a written agreement show, showing that they have the bathroom taken.
Councilmember Tucker, if it's a special event, especially a city special event, the city's gonna provide, is gonna analyze and provide those, those restroom facilities. The city will be the one to agree to provide those for the food trucks, because the city will be inviting those food trucks in for the special event. Other, other food trucks, the whole purpose in it says in the, in the ordinance, that it's not to have a bunch of tables and them sitting around, it's a mobile food truck. They get their food and they sit in their car, or they go home, or wherever they're going. So it's not a place just to hang out for tens of people, or, or a bunch of people. But if it's a, a special event, those bathrooms most likely will be provided by the city.
And this is what I didn't want the burden to be on us, to figure out the bathroom situation. So it's like, you vendor, you vendor, you vendor, you vendor, you vendor, you vendor, all twelve of y'all, you're gonna be in this location for an hour, that's fine, but show me something in writing that you got where the body's staying. That's, that's, that puts the burden on the vendors, not on us.
Good enough. Thank you, Michael.
All right. Then we know what changes we need to do to that, and we'll bring it back to the next meeting. You have the definition, and then change it to a hundred eighty days, and... All right. And what I'm gonna do right now, before we move on to seven point two, it is seven twenty-one, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Speaking of that, what rates? One for me.
He's had too much to drink.
Huh?
He's had too much to drink.
Yes.
Mmm, yes, come back, just come back.
Mm-hmm. No, it's from, it's, it's...
Yes, 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 yes.
Is it three, five feet?
No, it's from, it's, it's... Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I, I don't...
at it, and his, uh, and his recommendation, you know, is to approve it as well, so, I mean, I, I don't know that it's gonna impact us greatly one way or the other, so...
Mayor, um, well, I, in the report that I gave to you all, I kinda gave the background. The municipal management district of Triple Creek was predicated on the comp plan for the development agreement, not on the planned development district, because that's a different deal. And the property owner has agreed to moving the two hundred and twenty-one acres, the Triple Creek Municipal Management District Board of Directors has approved the withdrawal of it. I've got their, or, uh, their resolution here, and we're recommending that Triple Creek be moved as well. It won't have any adverse effect on, on city operations, or, or on Triple Creek Municipal Management District for that to be discussed. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions about the historical perspective, if you have them, otherwise, my recommendation is for...
I do. Uh, first off, in the, in your background, you say that it was not, that lose track was not included in the ordinance creating the Triple Creek Plan Development District, so that's why it's not included in the PDD.
Correct.
So when this, say we do, do approve this action, what will the zoning then be for that two hundred and twenty-one acre?
The zoning that is on the two hundred and twen-, our map has been wrong since the beginning about the Triple Creek Plan Development District. And as a result of this piece of work, I worked with Dove DeFrede, our city engineer, and we reviewed the legal description for the planned development district, and this property was not included in it. It was included in the development agreement.
Yeah.
And it was included in the municipal management district, but it was not included in the geography for the, for the zoning. So, the zoning never got changed on this two hundred and twenty-one acre from Ag to PD. So it's still Ag zoning, and Ag zoning is resident, basically residential zoning, requires two and a half acres for a single-family residential unit. Our, our comp plan, however, says that this should be a, a master plan community, and so they could come back or a request to change the zoning to something other than Ag, as long as it was consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Future land use?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry about that. Um, seven point three, my statement update concerning RCH. Um, you as the citizens and the residents of McLennan Chisholm, you're hearing this at the same time council is hearing this, okay? First off, um, I have, I have asked council to funnel all information, questions, anything like that, between Mr. Hildebrandt, the new city administrator, and myself, so there was one repository of information, and that between the two of us were the ones that put information out to you. One thing that I will not do is put information out until I have all my facts, okay? I'm not gonna give you just bits and pieces, because it's too easy to run rampant and wild with part of a story and not know the whole story, or part of a statement and not have the complete statement. I will tell you that every day that I have spent working on this, every time I peel a layer back because of a question, I end up with more questions than I do answers, okay? The thing that, that got everybody in an uproar is, on the morning of July thirteenth, is the day that certain subdivisions had their water turned off by RCH, um, because of the issue with water being pumped. What happened that day was a lot of residents started calling City Hall here, complaining. I wanna make sure everybody understands that the city of McLennan Chisholm is not a water provider at this point in time. Everybody that lives in, or the majority of the residents that live in McLennan Chisholm are customers of RCH, okay? And it makes it difficult, because I feel the same pain you do. I'm one of their customers, and am I happy with their services? No, I'm not, okay? But I answer to you as the, the taxpayers and the citizens of this community, being the mayor, and we are working on this, and we are peeling back the layers to get more information, more credible stuff, to find out where all the breakdown is. As Ms. London, uh, stated, there, there has been an agreement for many, many years between the city of Rockwall and RCH Water Supply Corporation Company, however they, they term themselves, um, so that everybody can understand, this is basically how it works. North, North Texas Water Supply supplies water to Rockwall. Rockwall then is the middleman and supplies water to RCH, who in turn supplies it to you and I as individual water customers, okay? That's, that's how it works. The agreement between RCH and the city of Rockwall has been around for many, many years to the tune of, they're only authorized to provide two point one million gallons per day from Rockwall to RCH, okay? It also has in that agreement to the term of thirteen hundred and fifty-nine taps, or as a tap meaning a customer, a, a location where water is being sent to. So, that was two point one million gallons, thirteen hundred and fifty-nine taps. As Ms. London put out the information, I think you said twenty-three, twenty-four hundred customers, um, I asked Mr. Pullin last week a rough estimate, and the number was much higher than that. There is also in that contract agreement between the city of, uh, Rockwall and RCH, there's a clause in there, or a paragraph in there, that states that every year prior to September first, RCH has the ability to approach, or in writing, to Rockwall to explain the future needs or the future growth in this area, as far as concerning how much additional water they may need, how many additional taps they may need to supply growth. I have a meeting with the city of Rockwall later on this week to get some more factual information, but what I'm being told is, they have not, in many, many years, supplied anything to the city of Rockwall asking or anticipating future growth per year, okay? I'm as frustrated as you are, but where I get, where I see information out here, and it's readily, it, it's information readily available to you as, as a consumer, as a citizen, I went through because our last council meeting, when Mr. Pullin showed up and was up in arms saying, "Our residents used three million gallons a day plus for twenty-nine days," was not accurate information. If I take the information from RCH, which is on their website of water usage, and I backed it all the way back to June first, the numbers are available all the way to January, but I went from June first to July thirteenth, or July twelfth, the day before, okay? That's forty-three days. In forty-three days, the amount of water, according to Mr. Pullin, twenty-nine of those days should have been over three, three million gallons or better. I'll even give you one better than that. If you told me two point nine million, blah, 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 round it up to three, okay? Just to make it, make it an easier number. Out of forty-three days, only two days was the water consumption, according to their numbers, two point nine million gallons or better. Two days. That was July sixth and July eighth. From June first to July thirteenth, only twenty-six of those forty-three days was water over two point one million gallons in usage. And then, out of those same forty-three days, seventeen days were less than two point one million gallons. So if they're saying that you as customers, or us as customers, were using three million gallons of water a day for twenty-nine days, my question is, where are these tens of, or where are these hundreds of thousands of gallons of water that don't show up on the same numbers that are on their website? I'm just as concerned as you are. I will tell you, they are not as forthcoming with information as I would like. Um, there are other avenues that I'm exploring, but I don't wish to make that public knowledge to get information presented to us. Mr. Pullin has agreed, as of today, to be here at the next council meeting to give us an update from RCH. That, like I said, today, that doesn't mean between now and then, that might not change. And we asked them to be here tonight, and they declined, but they did say they would be here at the next council meeting. But the numbers don't add up. Even if I look at the amount, I went and talked to the city of Rockwall at their last council meeting, because one of the things that I was concerned about, you as our citizens, are calling us over this, when the issue was with RCH. The issue was a little bit bigger than that, because if there was an issue with the amount of water being used, it would have been nice that our sister city, the city of Rockwall, would have at least given us a heads up as the city of McLennan Chisholm, that this was about to happen. That's just good business. If we did something in our city, in our area, that could adversely affect or be of a concern of the city of Rockwall, or the city of Terrell, or Fate, or Roy City, I would expect myself and my staff to at least give them a heads up, a courtesy call, to let them know, "Hey, this is about to occur, and this is why." And I made that very clear, that that was not the way to operate business with us, because it left us answering calls from citizens, it left us blindsided, because we didn't know what was going on. One thing I will tell you is, there was a lot of false information going out on July thirteenth. The city of Rockwall never stopped the flow... The city of Rockwall never stopped the flow of water to our citizens. They only held up to the agreement of only 2.1 million gallons. And I don't blame them. If RCH did not live up to their obligations to that contract, then Rockwall's only going to live up to what they're obligated to that's in that contract. And I don't blame them. But you and I are the ones that are losing out because of what I see as poor management. I will tell you that I am still working on this. As we get more factual information, I have no problem with us updating our website. But I don't want to put a lot of information out because if I do and it's not 100% or there's pieces missing to it, it's too easy for somebody to twist it and spin it. Kind of like the telephone game. I think we all played that as a kid. If I say something to you and you say something to somebody else, by the time it gets all the way back to me, it's not the same story. And I don't want that to happen because I don't want that to have an adverse effect for us as a city or for us as customers. But I will tell you that we are going to do our part as a city to get to the bottom of this. And we're not going to tolerate. There are going to be some expectations from our city of McLennan-Chisholm to RCH for you as our customers or our citizens and how we're going to be treated. I know that all of us share a common thread in a certain individual that works for that company that is very unprofessional. And I'm being nice in how they address customers. I myself, before I ever became mayor, had to deal with that, with that individual. And it is still occurring today and that's many, many years later. And that's not acceptable. But there's a lot of information that's been uncovered that I don't want to share it because I don't want it to be misconstrued and I don't want it to get us in a jam to where if we can take action, that it's not used against us in the wrong way. So know that we are working on it diligently. We're not trying to hide anything. We're not trying to avoid anything. I just want to make sure when we get to the bottom of it, we fix the problem, not band-aid the wound. But that's, that's where we're at at the moment. I still have some additional information I want to get from the city of Rockwall and discussion with them because numbers don't add up. The numbers don't add up. And I want to make sure I have factual information because I am exploring other avenues at the state level. And I'll just leave it at that. Guys, that's all I have on that one. What I am going to tell you, make sure I didn't miss anything on my notes. No, I didn't miss anything other than there's a lot of questions over the amount of taps or customers. Like I said, you, you had information of about 2,400, give or take. Mr. Pullen saying between 28 and 2,900. Numbers are all over the, all over the scale. I want to make sure I can nail down the actual information because if he's correct at 28 or 2,900, that's double what the contract allows. And that's not acceptable. Because we are paying customers and we, I'm like the rest of you. If I'm paying my bill on time, I turn that tap on, I expect water. I'm just like you guys. I don't want to see my, my yard brown. I worked hard to get that grass to grow this time. I don't want to see it brown. I want to see it green. I don't want to see cracks in my ground. I don't want to see a problem with my foundation any more than you do. I will reiterate, just be smart about the elements. I'm not going to tell you one way or the other. You are your own individuals, you're adults. I'm not going to school you on what's right and wrong. And if the state steps in and says, hey, we're under a water, water drought, whatever, then we all have to kind of play ball there. But I'm just like you. I expect if I pay my bill, I get water. That's all I have on it at the moment. As we get more information and I can nail a few things down with that information, we will update things on the website. That's all I have there. What I am going to do is concerning RCH and, and some of this information, I am going to move to executive session under 8.1, adjourn into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.0712, consultation with attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governing governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state law of Texas clearly conflicts, conflicts with this chapter. It is 7:45. We'll move to executive session.
Where are you going? Oh, go, go, go. That's fine. All right. It's eight-ten. We're back from executive session. Um, no actions taken in the executive session. All right. We'll move on to number nine, updates, discussion and direction to staff. Um, I do have a couple of things. First off, you said something about reports. I turned mine on this time. There it is.
Okay. I just think that it might be a good idea for us to add an agenda heading of either staff reports or city manager reports. Because I feel like a lot of times Conrad has a lot to report, but there's not an opportunity for him to do that. So I was just...
Conrad, you want to work on that and put together a report? Um, it goes along with what I was thinking. Um, what I would like to see, and I think Conrad and I already talked about this, is, you know, we're not that big of a city as far as having departments. But I think, uh, a weekly update from fire chief, from, from code enforcement, whatever, to you is, is something we need to start doing every week. Um, what else? It's, oh, and I would like, uh, I looked over there and we have that brand-new fire pickup that our fire chief is driving. If I noticed, it still doesn't have logos on it. Um, I expect that to be logoed within the next two weeks. If it's not logoed, if it's not logoed by the next meeting, then Chief Simmons needs to answer why. Because he drove that, he's had that truck for a while and it does not have the city, the city fire department logos on it. Otherwise, uh, I will ask council to take that truck away from him if he doesn't get it logoed. Um, what else? I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. Um, I just want to, and in that report she's talking about, because we have things like the food truck ordinance that we're working on, um, you know, any other developments or any other type of city business like that, maybe a weekly reminder and an update at each council meeting. Because I, I forgot about the food truck thing and that, oh crap, we haven't finished that. So we need to throw it back on her because we all get busy with our lives and sometimes we let something slip through the cracks. And we don't need to let that happen, especially with the budget season is coming up, issues with RCH and everything else. We need to, we need to be reminded. Um, I don't have anything else in that. If I do, I'll let you know later. Um, Trudy, do you have anything? You've been the worldly traveler on the boat and didn't invite none of us. Ryan?
Um, I was just gonna, okay, with the emergency service board meeting we had, um, there is talk about having a permanent ambulance in the maintenance area. A lot of people knew that, that that is something they are trying to push here in the near future. Um, they did point out a few things. The, uh, ambulance service is a performance base still and, um, our area, we are well above that in response time. But there was one area that wasn't, so we'll get that on the next, uh, meeting. But, uh, other than that, uh, we're trying to get an ambulance and then hearing what took place tonight, I mean, it's a clear message that time does matter.
Yeah, and I, I think that's been a desire, it's been worked on for several years.
For the first I've heard of it since, you know, second...
Well, you just took over in that aspect, but yes, um, it's good to see that it's coming closer to fruition. Daniel? Huh? Go ahead.
Um, if we could get an update maybe in the near future on, on our looking into getting, putting together a law enforcement. I know that you were working on that pretty aggressively and...
I was and kind of put it on hold, but yes.
And so, you know, because we have a budget...
Budget?
...in a name of, in terms of budgetary fashion.
Conrad? You and I can talk about that tomorrow or the next day. Um, yes, that, that's absolutely one of the questions. Uh, because as the city grows and, yeah, we've got to start looking at that. Lorna?
I have a road consortium update, just really quick. Uh, State Highway 205, as you know, is going to be expanded. That is still not yet funded by the state, uh, but, um, the, uh, person that our contractor thinks that will probably get funding, uh, allocated in FY 2023 with construction starting late '23, early '24. Now, of course, that can shift, but, uh, they're expecting to get, uh, fallout from other construction projects in the Houston and Austin area that aren't ready to go. And our projects are ready to go, so when they can't fund those, they'll, they'll direct that funding to us. But it's not going to happen in this, uh, this year, but potentially next year. Um, I-30, they, uh, you know, they're trying to do a big information campaign on the Interstate 30 expansion. And, uh, one question that, uh, was asked by Commissioner Nichols was, uh, how many lanes are going to be open? And there are going to be two lanes open at each, on each direction due to duration of the project. Now, the width of the lanes is, is to be determined, but it's going to be pretty dicey, but there will be two lanes open. And so that was, that was that. And we introduced Conrad to everybody, so he's getting to meet, uh, his counterparts.
Good, good, good. Well, if nobody else has anything, it is eight-sixteen and we have met everything on the city agenda for tonight. Meeting adjourned.